Meeting's order. Please rise in accordance with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and created in the firstborn, and Thank you all for joining us tonight. Cynthia is traveling, so I'm going to lead the meeting, but we do have her on a call over here with a microphone. So if you hear another voice, that's who that is. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings held August 10th of 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. But anybody to address the board? No, nobody today. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, good news report.
There we go. Well, good evening. About a week ago now, we made a soft launch of a new campaign that we're asking our community to support the 25,000 students and 3,500 staff members as they return to learn following the closure of schools on March 13th. That campaign is simply together. No matter the learning space in class, remote, or virtual, we are all in this together. We're asking folks to hang a royal blue ribbon in their window, write together in window paint, or place the word on their business's marquee out front. They can do that to let staff and students know that they're standing by them, they care about them, they want ultimate success for everyone involved. We invited our community partners as well, like the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, Junior Achievement, Avera Sanford, Lutheran Social Services, and more than 100 local vendors that do business with the Sioux Falls School District to also join us in this effort by promoting it among their employees and through their business. And we are starting to see those signs pop up around town, including this weekend on the locally iconic State Theater in downtown Sioux Falls. We were, actually Carly Youthy was out for a walk downtown and looked up and saw our logo on the State Theater marquee. So we're very happy about that. This morning, one of our well-known advertising agencies in town contacted us to ask for the Together logo. They're considering making some window clings that they'll be able to use to decorate their office windows. So we were thrilled to be able to share that. As many people are aware, Architecture Incorporated has sponsored t-shirts for us for about the past 15 years. So along with some other partners, they came together once again to provide a t-shirt for every staff member. Then with the help of our partners at Dakota Sports and Dakota Lettering, we also launched an online store so that any parents or community members who wanted a t-shirt to support also their students and teachers heading back to class, that could be available for them. So up to this point, there have been 74 t-shirts ordered, and half of the proceeds from those t-shirt sales go to the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation to continue to support students and teachers. So we really have been able to embrace this concept and provide some support for our students and staff as they make their way back to the classroom. And it's just a really great time to remember that there are lots of things that people have differing opinions on. All of those things matter, and we want to respect one another. But there's also power in recognizing that we are all in this together, and we're better together. So we invite anyone else out there watching who has not yet participated, please do that in any way, shape, or form that works for you and your family. It's just great to see those messages of support coming in for our students and our staff.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree. I think it's nice to drive down the street and see different businesses or drive through your neighborhood and see people and you know, students and staff all feel different about returning back to school. And so just knowing that even though maybe there's not a mass of people outside of your building, you know, to cheer you on as you start your school year, that there really are people in your neighborhoods and your stores and stuff that really do care and want the best for everybody entering the school building. So, great idea. Thank you. Alright. Tonight we have two conflicts of interest. The first is an administrator one for Stephanie Jones. Is there any questions or comments on that one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And the second one is mine, just stating that I'm an employee of Sanford, which is why I abstain from the approval of those claims. So can I get a motion for that one?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the conflict of interest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, and I'll abstain. So three to one on that one. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. We're going to look at A through H. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll go to the supplemental consent agenda. We'll start with nine As, Claims to Sanford Healthcare System. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I, are all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that passes with two abstentions from Board Member Mickelson and myself. Next, we have supplemental consent agenda nine B, Claims to Avera Health System. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Alright, that passes with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Now we will move to the reports of the Superintendent, Dr. Stavum.
Yep, and I'm going to, I think, start things off tonight with Dr. Boyson, and I just want to again thank everybody in our district. This has been a long haul. It started long before I came, but similarly in many districts, putting together the plans that lead us into next week and beyond. And so we're going to get a final update tonight just from where we are with some of the details. The board has been given regular updates as well as things that now have been pushed out to our community. So tonight we have some updates and then the actual vote on our final, final version of the plan, which we still know will continue to evolve, but gets us now prepared to start school on Thursday with that plan voted on by the board. So, Dr. Boyson, start us off.
Good evening. I'm going to start this Return to Learn Plan tonight, and we have a couple other people, Doug Morrison and Dr. Knoll, that will jump in to give other details. So my part in this is to give you an update on that Virtual Academy. Virtual Academy application opened the last week of July, and it closed last Tuesday at midnight, and after we were all done sifting through those applications and removing the duplicates because we had people submitting a couple times, just making sure they got in, we landed on 2,976 applications. And you can see the breakout by elementary, middle school, and high school. And that setup for the Virtual Academy looks a little bit different at each level. At elementary, we hired Virtual Academy teachers, so we have 30 teachers that were district employees previously, and they are housed at Ren Bird or Hawthorne, and they have a caseload and they're working with those kids, and they're starting to make connections with those families today even. And I've heard from a few of them as they're starting to reach out. And the students will go pick up their devices at their home building at all levels, and that will happen throughout this week. At middle school and high school, that model looks a little bit different. I could be a teacher, a language arts teacher in my building, and I can be assigned three sections of face-to-face instruction, and then I reach out to kids during a couple other sections. And so that's part of my caseload at middle school and high school. And they have the ability to staff that. Where at elementary, we know that they're with that core group of kids all day long. And so that, that's why that's a separate type of program. So again, they're reaching out to families, connecting, starting to get the devices in the hands of those students and get them ready to go. We're really excited about that initial launch and what that looks like for the students in the Sioux Falls School District.
I'll pass this off to Dr. Morrison.
Good evening. I'm going to speak to you tonight about the tracking process that we're using around the COVID-19 in our schools and across the district. So we have created basically a process that will be used to notify the community with regards to the current levels of status in each building. And so we'll be operating under four levels. And so I'll just kind of run through them, let you know how those are going to lay out. So we will have a green Level One, and a green Level One will essentially be no confirmed cases at the building level. School will be open with precautions in place, as we have today, and the schedule will be regular. We will also have a green Level Two, which will mean that there has been a confirmed positive or case in the school. Will be open with increased, increased levels of precaution, and then that could result in some sort of modified classroom schedule at the school level. But the main part of the school will be open and operating as usual. We will have, then, the third status would be a yellow status, and that would be, we would define that as a confirmed spread within a class, a pod, or a building. And that school would be open, but with significantly increased levels of precaution. And that's where we would probably move to a modified building schedule. So attending two days a week in that schedule that you've seen out there. And then finally, there would be a red status, which would be confirmed significant spread within a building. That would result in the status of the building being closed, and we would move to fully remote learning. The levels will be determined based upon many factors. So just all situations are very much unique to the school, and the factors could include building size, building layouts, case levels, whether positive or quarantine, type of staff affected, and many other things that would go into determining that level's status. And additionally, we'll be working closely with the Department of Health to get their expertise and soliciting their feedback before making any decisions. I like to say in all cases, parents will be notified. So just like they are today. If you're in close contact with somebody who has it, you get a letter, you get a notification from the school. So the parent will always know. This is more of a macro level, something that the community can look at, or you can get up in the morning, look at what the status of your school is. And so it's more of a more of a dashboard at a school level. But parents will always be notified of the situation. In many cases, they're, you know, because of all the factors that are going to, it's a very complex process, and numbers don't alone determine decisions, but all those things that I mentioned before have to go into the process. Within the district, we're maintaining a very detailed tracking database. So we're looking at anything from kids and staff that are symptomatic, that are close contacts, which could come through the, identified through the DOH, could be district identified, or could be self-identified, many examples of just close contact. And then of course, there's positive cases. And so in all cases, the goal is to quickly analyze the situation, notify when we need to, quarantine if needed, and change the mode of operation, mode of learning if we need to, based on all the factors that we're looking at. So so in the next day or two, out on the website, there will be essentially a dashboard by school of what mode they're in, either green Level One, green Level Two, yellow, or red. And as we start school, everyone, I'm sure, will be in green Level One, but on daily basis, we'll be updating that so that the community, parents, staff, all know what mode of operation that school is in. So that's kind of the process that we're going to use to to let everyone know and know out there what's, what status our school is in.
One of the hardest things, I think, from everybody's first go-around with this was it was kind of that all or nothing proposition. We were all in school one day, and then everything was closed the next. And so we know one of the points that we want to be very clear about is letting people see what is happening at their school, which may be different than another school. And numbers alone don't determine that, but are part of that. And so what we want to make sure is that those decisions that we make are reflected clearly. And so if somebody's talking about, well, their child's classroom may be in a hybrid model, or maybe an area of the building went remote for a few days, that's not the same, and they can go look at their school and say, okay, I can look and see that my school is not that same fixture. But that's going to take everybody really tuning in. We'll notify people by our school notification processes if a schedule is going to change. And we're going to look at that data last thing before we all attempt to leave, and first thing in the morning because just like snow and subs and different conditions, it might change in the morning depending on availability of staff, all of those factors. So we're going to do our best to be quick with decisions, but we also know that some of those may need to be made quickly just for the reality of being able to operate along the way.
Doug, there's much significance to your and Molly's work, and because as this viral dynamics continue to evolve, we should remain vigilant in collaborating broadly and be sensitive to data-driven responses. We don't want to become complacent. If our goal, it sounds like our goal is using our local data-driven approach, allowing us to operate in learning models that are appropriate for keeping students and staff safe. So what I'm hearing based on that is that we can expect easy access to updated data, maybe daily, that we can expect leadership will apply the data at the most granular level, using either wings or classrooms or buildings. And that with that, we can expect that school, that our leadership here, will employ different strategies to help ensure the safety of staff and students. So thank you for tackling that, and it's significant work, and it's important to how we operate.
And I just want to be clear about that, too. We're starting with all of the possible mitigation strategies that we can. Mass, hand washing, spacing, all of those things. What you're, one word that you used there was diligence, and over time, is we have to make sure that we're putting those things into practice every day, and not just as the first few days start, but over a long period of time, which I think is difficult. We all know how human beings are with, you know, doing things with fidelity over long periods of time. So that's an excellent point. And there may be things such as schedule changes, which is another strategy that we'll use if we have indicators that would point to, or realities about operating that lead us to change that model of delivery. So I just want to be clear, this dashboard reflects the model of delivery based on lots of those other things.
And then with what you're saying is that that's how we're starting out, and we know things, it may, it's going to evolve. We don't know exactly how, but that we do have those KPIs. So as the dynamics of the virus do evolve and change, that perhaps at some point, maybe we could do away with masks, or or maybe we need to add extra plexiglass in certain situations. So it's important, too, as we move through the school year and we look at how we're operating now, that, and it makes sense with, with where the viral dynamics at, that we also know that that's going to evolve. So it may not be how we have to operate in, in April concerning those tools to mitigate the spread of virus.
I think one question that people might have, and we don't have it tonight, that's fine, but how does this fit into whether it's the athletic or the activities grid? So for example, if Edison is on a level or a yellow, and they play in football or volleyball or whatever against Memorial, who's in green, then what? So, you know, our building might be okay, but another building might not, and we have an activity that's scheduled with them. And so I think those are some questions that people may have, too. This is a good academic, but then we look further beyond to that athletic or the other activity piece of that, and what happens when they don't jive?
Yeah, and one thing to think about, too, is during the day is our most important time because that's when teaching and learning happens, and our activities and athletics are also very important, but instruction comes first. And one of the things that we've been talking about this week is that we're trying to make sure that we have the right strategies in place for those activities so that we don't undo what we're trying to do during the day. And that's really hard because kids like to see their friends play, parents and family members like to see their kids play, but we want our athletes and our activities kids to be able to do their events first. And so we're taking a look at that for the consistency factor and seeing if we need to change some things even just to make sure that we're not undoing when we get kids and family members in another venue. So we've already talked about limiting tickets, which we will do, but we're also looking at what we're going to ask students to do if they're participating, being able to space maybe a little differently, and every venue is different. A gym is different than an outdoor field. An outdoor field is different than a cross-country track. Orchestra is different than choir. So those are still things we're fairly sure how we're starting, but we're still looking at it, and we will continue to as we, as we move along and conditions change, or we figure out some other things that we want to try.
Sure.
One question I had, just, I don't know if you want me to save questions for after, but when you talk about the letter home, can you just, will that be a mailed letter? So, you know, are you, will the notification happen via email, so more immediate, or is the letter going home via US Postal Service?
I think the letters are more, more immediate. They come through, you know, directly to the parent.
Parent notification. Our normal communication. I couldn't hear that. What was that?
They'll be more immediate. I mean, they won't be via, via the postal service or whatever.
Either an email or an infinite campus message.
Email, text, phone message.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Doug?
And the next part of the board report is going into some of the information you maybe haven't seen because it's behind the scenes or in the classrooms and into the schools. Many of the reports you've heard so far has been at a district level with the Return to Learn Plan. And so this gives you a little bit of a glimpse into those classrooms. So we're taking the inside there. So really from curb to classroom. So we're just going to start out here in that morning part, and you've seen on the website, if you've gone there to look, the bus scheduling and some of the different protocols we put in place for the buses, as far as the loading mechanisms, how we're going to have the students enter the buses, and then when they leave the buses. I see a couple of the photos there, too, with the smiles that are hid behind the mask, but you can definitely see those smiles through their eyes. But safety protocols, as we start the day and students get on those buses and are transported to the schools, we've utilized and implemented safety plans in those formats. The next part of it is when they arrive in the morning, you'll go to many of our elementary schools especially and see marked out into the, the parking lots or in the playground areas where they have areas that the students will line up. This one happens to be with one of our elementary schools, and you can see they have junior kindergarten where it's spotted out there with a blue mark where students will stand to stay socially distanced from the next student that will be behind them in line. And they have this throughout, and we'll see a little bit of a map later on, also at the end of the day when they do the busing and the pickup. But you get a little bit of a glimpse here of some of the safety protocols that are utilized at our elementary schools as far as the morning arrival. And students getting off the bus, being able to line up still so we can go into the classrooms, into the schools. This is also utilized at times with the, with the playground, and then also at the end of the school day. The next step in there, when we come into the school buildings, you'll start to notice, especially if you had a freshman, because we did have with our back-to-school nights, freshmen or new students to the building be able to come back in with a single adult, or in the middle school, if they were incoming sixth-grade student or brand new to the building, they were able to come in with that single adult. And they came into the buildings, and we had the areas marked off of where they were to entrance, so we tried to have that go one-way directional flow, and then the exit area. And so you see that here at the CTE Academy with that entrance and the exit area. As we go in then to the building, if you go into the office area, those individuals that are working directly with the public and having that face front with the public, we did put the plexiglass dividers in, and the tape marks there to be able to help individuals coming into the office area to know where to stand to make sure. and the tape marks there to be able to help individuals coming into the office area to know where to stand to make sure that we maintain that social distancing. And so here you will see with the Plexiglas dividers with our clerical that work directly with the public and some of that office staff that are in there. There's also some other type of just physical dividers that are in there that we utilize with desks in different areas, especially as maybe more difficult to be able to set up some of those Plexiglas dividers. Staff will still utilize, you know, protective wear with the mask. But we just implemented those things into our school and entrance areas for adults coming in or for students to come in and need assistance and help. As you start to head into the hallways, there are several of the areas where you see either tape on the floor or directional signs on the walls. Here's one example, obviously, with the directional signs that you utilize as far as the flow of traffic for our students as they come into the building. And you see innovatively with some of these individuals that have created ropes that they utilize and the students hang on to a certain position in the rope and hang on to that to maintain that distancing. And you see these young elementary students giving a look back, wondering why their photo is being taken. But just the way that they're able to implement things to help students remember how to go about with the protocols. And that's much of the reason why we're starting out the first two days with half the students to be able to go through and practice some of these things with a smaller number of students to implement that before we get into that next week of school. So this is one of those examples. Here's another example of one of our high schools that has the two different levels. This one just happens to be a Washington High School and it's the secondary level there where the flow of traffic, or I'm sorry, on the first level there, the flow of traffic expectation through the hallways as they go from classroom to classroom throughout the day. And they have that set up for each one of the levels and each one of the schools is utilizing a little bit of a different variance on that. And so directional flow is a significant part that our schools have worked on. It's much easier at times in the elementary where they're able to do class groups and the high schools and middle schools a little bit different. So they had to implement the signs and be able to help students see which direction they should be transferring from classroom to classroom. As we get into the classrooms then, we've gone through and many of the classrooms have been set up in years past as we worked through a lot of different best modes or best practices of teaching in groups or pods. And many of those have been removed now and and put into the face front, the single file rolls where we'll go through because that's been identified one of the best practices. You see here a couple more examples of that classroom where as much as possible or were feasible, we utilize that space in the classrooms. We've also had to rent facilities to take equipment out of classrooms now and we take that out of the classroom and we move it into a a storage facility at this point in time because it allowed us then to free up additional space within the classroom so that we can spread desks out even at a further distance than we had before, just to remove some of those things that would not be able to be utilized at this time. You can see also there's several buildings that had tables and we didn't have the resources of buying all brand new desks in. So that's where the dividers truly came in to play. So we utilize those dividers in those classrooms and put those into place so that we could still partition off those students from each other within the classrooms that had the tables set up. A lot of times this was more so found in our elementary schools, but not necessarily limited to that. There's multiple schools as we see coming up here that it was also utilized in. You see another classroom here where we have the tape divide in there. If you notice in the top photo here as well, there's tape on the floor up where the instructor is. And at times it is difficult with the instructors, especially if you can't see their their mouth, the intonation, depending on what the class is, if it's a speech class, to be able to see those in facial expressions. So they did tape off areas on the floor where when individuals in that area given a presentation, they can remove their mask and give their presentation. And then when they move out of that area, they would return to wearing the mask and proceed back in the classroom, especially if the teacher is going out to work with the students in the classroom. And then if you see on the bottom one there, we were able to in this classroom, and that's not always the the way we'd be able to do that because you see in the top one, we taped it off onto the desk. And on the bottom one there, we were able to do it one person per table. And so we're utilizing the space available that we have and to make that as safe as possible for our students as they come back into the classroom. Here's another example with the keyboards, the coverings on there just because it came a little bit of a concern when we continually wiped those off so we can be good stewards of the equipment that we have, yet still try to keep that clean for our students. And so they have coverings that'll go over many of those keyboards that we'll utilize as that goes from class to classes. They exchange student groups by the bell. And so our keyboard coverings, they've gone through and utilized the covering on that. Same way, and you maybe had seen one of the reports that came through this last week on Kelo, I do believe it was, but where we went in Raven Industries that helped and supported and provided the materials of no cost to the school. They had to buy a few of materials to be able to hang these dividers here, but in some of our computer classrooms to be able to put those dividers in between there that would extend out far enough so the students can sit at those. And then even with the the one that you see to the right side there, we've utilized that in multiple classrooms where it's able to divide students from one table to the next. And so they've been very innovative in the school buildings. Not necessarily part of our large return to learn plan, but definitely part of the building return to learn plan is being able to separate out those areas that we're not able to socially distance. And so that's always been the first and foremost, if we can utilize a straight rows with the students facing the same direction. At times that's not always possible and we utilize that then and use the partitions to be able to go through and be able to separate students off safely. Sometimes when students will do some group work, we'll still utilize those partitions to be able to keep our our students safe. Another example that you have here is just with the signage. There's been a significant amount of signage that has gone out and up into our buildings. So if you were able to at some point in time be in a building, you'll see that, whether it be the arrows or the the washing of hands or sanitization, just the indicators and signs of symptomatic students or if you may be symptomatic or feel that you are. And so there's a lot of signage that has gone out into our buildings to help to remind our students and our faculty of just the safety protocols because so often they came out with the first reminder of don't touch your face and do those things, but you're such a habit. And so the signage is really utilized just to remind people that this is what we expect at this point in time. As we step in then, we we utilize the the spray bottles, if you see there in the bottom right, the spray bottom bottles were given one to every classroom and there's filler stations that teachers would be able to utilize to fill those spray bottles to be able to clean or sanitize desktops as we go throughout a day. The Kleenexes are in in large supply and quantity, but also if you see the sanitation dispensers that are there. And we're working, some things get on back order and that's been a difficulty as as all the schools and establishments work hard to be able to get the sanitation dispensers. That's one part of it, but then to get the the gel or foam that goes inside of those. And we're working very much so this week here and people making some runs for us to be able to get those things and get them into place this week. A lot of that has been delivered. The bottles have been out in the classrooms now and filled, so they'll be utilized in the classrooms by our teachers. Next part on there, if you see in the lunchrooms, in the the high school and the middle school, we've utilized the Plexiglas divider for the cashiers that sit at the registers for our lunchrooms. In the elementary, if you remember, they're utilizing a card system. So they'll just bring the bag of cards down to the cashier. They'll scan those in, so they don't need to sit at the register. They just scan them. They can keep a separate distance from the students. Or in our high school and middle school, that was not a solution that would work. So we utilize the Plexiglas to be able to separate that individual at the cash register from the students as they come through the line. They will utilize, we did go through and purchase IDs for every one of our middle school students now so that they do have a scan ID and those are distributed out to the the middle school students or to the middle schools so they can give to the students. So everyone will be able to go through and have that where they can scan an ID or a barcode and be able to utilize the cafeteria system without having to type in a separate code for each one. We also have the chairs and some of those, they've marked them off with the red. Some of the schools have actually removed each one of those. Now there's a little bit of work and effort into that as well. So even marking them off where the students can or should not sit, they've done on the rows or the picnic table type tables and also the round tables, they've marked off areas where students should and should not sit just to be able to keep things separated. Many of our elementary schools will have students eating in the lunchrooms or on the stage area as well, just to be able to spread that out even more so during the lunchtimes. Some of our larger schools have actually added in additional lunch periods in there so they can spread that out even more so and minimize some of the new student counts within those lunch periods. Going on to water bottle filling stations, it looks a little rudimentary and it is. And some of these things are temporary fixes for for the solution that we need at this point in time. Hopefully those will be uncovered and and people will be able to have the option to use the water bottle filler station or obviously the water fountain. Now, in some of the cases, we're working, Mr. Kreider and his team is working very much so to get those installed. There's been some difficulty with some of the the vendors that we've partnered with on that, but we're working very hard to get those installed. We still put signage up by those that if you do use the water fountain, because in some areas we're still going to have to keep that active till we get them all installed, then they need to use the hand sanitizer that's there or wash their hands afterwards. So those options and things like that, some stuff becomes on back order. A lot of that we're getting into place and done even through this week as we speak now. And so the water filling stations, those went into the 17 schools, I believe, that either didn't have it or didn't have enough of those and we're working to get those implemented. Every student, because I know there were some questions that came in about the water bottles and I know Avera had donated thousands of water bottles to all of our elementary so that every student would have one that they could keep right there at the school and and be able to fill those. So that's been greatly appreciated. There's other businesses that have been donating things all along here, which has helped out immensely. We go into the health office area as well in case there is a student that may feel that they're symptomatic or ill and we have an isolation area where they're able to go to and keep themselves separated from other students or other other faculty while we care for that student and are able to call their parent to be able to come in and get them. So that's part of the reality that we have now. We need those areas set aside so that students can go there and keep everyone safe, including that student. We also have a little bit of fun. We can't forget to smile as we go along because for for kids coming back into the building, they love it, you know, and they have fun and they go through and I tell people often, I taught in the high school and I think most know that. But the first time I went into an elementary and a kindergarten student came up and gave me a hug and they looked up and who are you? I go, you hugged me, buddy? I didn't hug you. But they're they're there and they have fun and they love what they're they're doing and they love to see their their classmates back in. Well, it's the same with our custodial staff and others. They enjoyed a lot of this work as they went through because they knew they were doing purposeful work for our students. When they're putting together those dividers on a lot of those days, you know, into the evening or on Saturdays, they love doing that because they knew they're doing things for kids. As you go through and and we have some of the modeling in there because the positive attitude is incredibly important. You even see the the care dog there that has his mask, his or her mask on as we're going through and I think the dog's even winking. But the growth mindset that we have for our students and that whatever it is, they're going to be able to work through it and they're going to be able to to manage this just as well as they do so many other things they come in contact with. So it's going to be a great life lesson for them as well. And then heading home, there's obviously the exit signs that we have and and the processes at the end of the day that we're going to utilize for students leaving. You saw some of that in the elementary where you have the end of the day dismissal locations and it's plotted out throughout the whole playground area of where the schools or students go to so that they can make sure they get them properly loaded onto the bus. And again, the end of the day bus bus protocols, we have those there. They're on the website. The families can go to and see and they can click on their own school to see the times, but really those protocols are out there for them as well. And so as we kind of go through, that's just a little bit of a glimpse of what's going on in the schools. It obviously does not cover everything. There's so many more things that are happening that our return to learn plan does not cover because our return to learn plan was intended to be for the district as a whole. And then our our schools went in and developed return to learn plans for their individual schools and put those things into practice as we meet our students here coming up on Thursday. So just a little bit of a glimpse. Next part is just the executive summary that you were provided in the return to learn plan executive summary. First part, this is intended to be an update for the board on the status of the return to learn plan. The present recommendations are in here and I'll go through a few of those, then a recommendation at the end as far as a board action. So the first thing is to always remember this is a living document. We continue to make changes of this as we need to, to make sure it's updated. Some of the things that you would have seen that that went in here lately have been extracurricular activities. That was presented last week. That went in here. Things as far as the busing protocols, we we added that into the return to learn plan and the graphics for that. Any of the state, local or national healthcare provisions that were sent to us, we've updated those pieces of information. So we continually update things here as we get new information. And so this is a living document. One of our goals has been all along, even though we knew it was not a complete document, to be to be able to communicate out with our our public and our teachers, our staff and our parents and to be able to have that document out there and continually put that in front of them. So much of the information, if you go to the Sioux Falls School District website, is on there under the COVID planning. And so that data as well as the return to learn plan is in there. But a big part, it'll continue to change. The document is regarded as our official plan of the Sioux Falls School District and it will be updated on a regular basis as we need to and go throughout. And this will reflect any of those revised changes. So the recommendation is to approve the return to learn plan and direct the administration to make necessary changes during the school year with board notification. I'd stand by for any questions.
Anybody have any questions for any of the people that presented?
I'd make a motion to approve the return to learn plan and direct administration to make any necessary changes during the school year with board notification.
Second, that's second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I would just say, you know, the more things get put into place, the simpler it looks and the amount of time and effort that our team has put into this, our building level folks, our departments is the the most complex and staggering work, I think, that any of us have ever been engaged in. And they have risen to the challenge with late nights and early mornings and more meetings than we can begin to count. But it's all worth it because we need to be able to feel like we've done our best as we welcome people back to school. And I can say with all assurance, we've done our best. We continue to do our best, but my deepest appreciation to everybody who's put this plan together to bring it to you tonight.
Yeah, I would just add a few things. As we looked at the pictures that you shared, clearly we were at lots of different buildings and and each building is doing different things. So if there are parents or community members who are watching that have questions about their building, really the best place to direct that is to their building principal or their teachers or their staff there because they are the ones, as you said, who took that and really made that plan, their building specific plan. So that would be the first thing. The second thing is a huge thanks to our custodial staff for the work that they put in. You know, they're used to doing the routine things of getting the schools ready for students to come back, but this was a whole new ballgame for them. And just from the pictures and from the things that I've seen, I just, you can't thank them enough. And I think they do amazing thing through things throughout the year. And so this is just one more way that they're really stepping up and showing that they truly are. Every single person at every level of our buildings is going to be the ones that help keep our kids stay safe. So thank you to them. And then I also wanted to just clarify, I know I've heard some different comments about the amount of money that teachers have had to spend putting together some of these things for their classrooms. And I just want to make sure that people understand that many of these supplies have been provided to our classrooms, either donated or purchased through money that we've been donating or that we've been given through grants. And so I don't know if you have anything else to add on that, just for clarification.
Yeah, and we did, you know, when we knew that there was products needed to be able to create some of those dividers because some started to be be able to put those together and and principals had asked those teachers for any of the receipts that they had to be able to reimburse them. Then the building principals started to order those from areas in town as soon as Jeff Kreider and his team were aware of that and Missy Brock, they then bought those products into the warehouse so that the schools could order them directly from the warehouse, the district warehouse. So any of those that we were aware of and even gave direction to the building principals that they were welcome to invite teachers to be able to submit those receipts to them and we had reimbursed that because it was not the intent to have anybody do that independently as a cost to themselves. There's things that we know teachers do every year.
Right.
We did not want this to be part of that.
Yeah.
And so if they had not, they were always welcome to be able to take those receipts and still to take those into the building principals and then we asked building principals to reach out to people to ask them if they had.
Sure.
And so we did try to then inventory those into the the district. It's also helpful at the district because obviously when we buy in large quantity, we can get them at a cheaper price.
Yeah.
And we wanted to be able to provide that service.
Thank you for that. We all know teachers, like you said, spend a lot of money and there are probably people who did buy things on their own above and beyond. But for the structural kind of things that we really wanted for protections, we did our best to provide people with that so that they would all have access to those things in their classroom.
Without sounding hokey, you know, we talked about janitorial staff, you guys, teachers, doctors, staff, everybody, the words together, that we're in this together is really shines right right now as we see all the work that's done, everybody that's implementing and we got schools starting. Kids are going back to school and that's a really good thing. So thanks, everybody, for all the work that you've done.
All right, I have a motion and a second on approval of the return to learn plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it by roll call since we have Cynthia, so. Board member Parker?
Aye.
Board member Tulky?
Aye.
Board member Baker?
Aye.
Board member Mickelson? Board member Mickelson? Oh, shoot. Okay. Well, so we have our four votes for sure. So those opposed, same sign. Motion passes to approve the Return to Learn Updates. Thank you all. All right, next.
I'll do the four.
Aye.
All right. Well, back to normal. I have a couple of reports here tonight. First one's a post-secondary report that comes to us from the National Clearing House. That post-secondary report provides information about student outcomes and our district priority statement one, making sure we can provide a rigorous and effective engaging curriculum that allows student growth. And when we think about that post-secondary report, we really need to look at what we're doing for 13 years while those students are in our classrooms to get them college and career ready. And this information helps provide us what they are doing once they leave our doors. So when we began and we looked at the Bureau of Labor and Statistics Project by 2022, they say 65% of all jobs will require post-secondary education. So those occupations that require a post-secondary degree are projected to grow faster than any occupation that does not require a post-secondary education per entry. Those occupations typically require a master's degree, which is the smallest group in terms of the base year employment in 2016, and that's where this graph started. But they're growing at the fastest rate. So they're growing 16.7% faster than any other. So those people with a master's degree, that's what will be required of those. And that's twice the rate of all other occupations. That's 7.4. The second fastest growing group is that occupation that typically requires a doctoral or professional degree. And so this chart shows that applicants will need to have some type of post-secondary degree for entry-level employment. So the data on the post-secondary enrollment records for the Sioux Falls District comes from that National Clearing House. And the National Clearing House enables schools across the nation to electronic file that pulls that information from 3,600 post-secondary institutions. 98% of all students in public and private institutions participate in this data collection. However, we do have to remember that students have to elect into this option. So not all our students are represented in this. They have to agree to provide their information. So students going into the military, that's not reflected in this information or if they choose not to offer that. So the total number of post-secondary enrollments, graduation records, and the total number of graduates differ because of that information and the requests, often students block that request from outside requesters. So Chart B here shows the percentage of 2019 district graduates enrolled in post-secondary institution the fall immediately after high school. And that was 59%. If we look at that eight-year trend from 2012 to 2019, the percent of district graduates with initial enrollment have remained steady over the past five years. The past year enrollment stayed flat overall but have decreased at the in-state tuitions and increased slightly at out-of-state. And we see that fluctuate from year to year depending on where students choose to go. So that top line are all students and the second line is our in-state tuition and outside of the state is that bottom line at 18%. So then where are they going? If we look at this information, most of our students, like we said, the highest percentage, our top three are USD, SDSU, and then Southeast Tech, followed by Augie and University of Sioux Falls. And those two, and they fluctuate back and forth too. Last year, I think Nebraska jumped up one. So with Dr. Maher here, he was excited about that, as would Dr. Stavum. So then the percentage of students enrolled in college the fall immediately after high school as compared to two years, because we look at, sometimes students jump in or sometimes they wait and have that delayed entrance. And so this information shows us where we're at with students that go right away. So during the first two years is that blue line. So 61% of our students go sometimes during the first two years and 59% of our students go immediately right out of high school. And so then, what's that look like compared to other across the state? And so here is the percentage of Sioux Falls school districts enrolled in college immediately after high school as compared to all graduates in the state of South Dakota. So you can see, and this goes from 2012 to 2018 because it's a two-year lag on that report. So starting in 2012, we had 72% of our, 75% of our students that would go right away immediately. And this year, we're at 64%, or at 2018. So you can see that trend line. We matched up with the state in 2014 and then it varies just slightly as to what the students want to do as they get out of high school. So that's good information to look at from a state lens. So then when we continue to look at this post-secondary information and we look at the graduates and how they pursue their post-secondary institutions over time due to delay entrance, 70% of overall average at any time during the first two years after high school. So 70% of our students go at some point within two years. And that's the data from 2012 to 2019. And you can see as you look at that chart, the green chart is the new enrollments, the orange, they persisted through. If we look at that blue line there, they returned after a stopout. So they might have taken that gap year and jumped back in. And so overall, again, 70% at any time within those first two years attend that post-secondary. Most jobs, we know, will require applicants to have a post-secondary education and training beyond high school. Employers will continue to look for cognitive skills as active listening and communication, critical thinking, to make post-secondary education a necessary requirement. The post-secondary enrollment data will continue to be retrieved and analyzed on an annual basis to monitor our district graduates. I stand by for any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Boyson?
I would just comment. I think this is going to be a really interesting data point to watch post-COVID.
That's what I was thinking too.
I think, you know, we can expect the best, but I think many of the metrics that we've looked at typically, graduation data, post-secondary data, all of that is going to look really interesting for probably the next 10 to 15 years. And maybe I'll be wrong. I hope I'm wrong on some things. Maybe it'll look better than we expect, but I just think we're going to have that lens over everything that we monitor for many years to come.
Dr. Stavum, do you remember the quote that you gave to the new teachers at Lincoln High School, something that affected the goal? Could you repeat that if you remember? Otherwise, I'll muster myself.
Is that my quote, my why that is we want students to be able to choose their future before it chooses them?
Yes. I thought that was so poignant and so applicable to this discussion.
Yeah, which is also why it's critically important that we keep kids in school because it's not just about K-12, it's about K-16 and beyond. So another interesting data point to watch.
I know we've talked about before, you know, if we had an entire year, like if this year in 2021, we didn't graduate a single teacher or we didn't graduate a single nurse, you know, what would that do to our economy? But what would that do to our community and the ability for people to learn and the ability for people to get care and all sorts of those things? So I just picked those two professions out, but there are multiple different professions, whether it's a four-year degree, whether it's a two-year. What if we had no electricians? What if we had no plumber? I mean, they're all very, very important. And so it is important that our kids are in school and learning. And I know when I think about kind of some of our conversations with Southeast Tech and they've had a lot of people calling to say, "Are you in-person or are you online this year?" And I think people are making decisions on whether to return based on their learning style and they know that they will learn better by doing one or the other. And so if they know in advance, they might delay that. And so that's going to have a trickle-down effect, like you mentioned, for who knows how long in lots of different markets in the state or in our community for sure. So yeah, it'll be very interesting to watch. But I think we always see those kind of same top, like you said, five or six universities that are close and some offer, yep,
Back and forth, yeah.
Great opportunities for our students to, whether it's scholarships or location, things like that. So it's fun to watch and see where our students are choosing and maybe we can offer, that's where we can offer some of our dual credit and things like that and really target those populations of people who will really benefit from those other options as well.
Help support them however we can.
Yeah.
So I'd ask to acknowledge the post-secondary enrollment report.
I have a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Boyson.
Wow. I'll stay up here because I have the most.
Okay.
This one's funny. Board Member Baker, you referenced the day last Monday over at Lincoln. And a big part of this report talks about some of our back-to-school trainings and the things that we've done to help support our students or our staff as they get ready for back-to-school. So the professional development report update strategic plan, it's district priority area three for district staff and priority statement seven, that the Sioux Falls District will support and train staff to encourage innovation and enable them to grow throughout their careers. So part of staff development and professional development is we provide opportunity for all our employee groups and we'll walk through some of those. The Sioux Falls District is committed to that professional development for all 3,600 employees. We've created professional development guidance that includes health and safety considerations for staff presenting and attending professional development throughout the year. And the professional development guidance includes information on hygiene practices, social distancing, serving of food, because that's important, and sharing of materials. Throughout the summer and prior to the start of the year, district staff organized and implemented virtual and in-person professional development activities for custodian, clerical, educational assistants, related service providers, specialists, teachers, administrators, substitute teachers, and all who will be in the buildings throughout the year. In addition, the district planned professional development, the building principals provided building-specific health and safety protocols and practices for their buildings. And that was a big part. As staff came back last week, as principals spent a large amount of that time really working with the staff to help them feel good about the beginning of the year and really understand what that protocol looks like. And Dr. Stavum and Dr. Knob talked about that. It's not just today and tomorrow. It's what we're doing a week from now, a month from now, just to make sure that we continue those practices throughout. So this report highlights some of the other key activities that have taken place over the summer. We did training with blended learning, collaboration, culturally responsive teaching, social-emotional learning, response to intervention, and our PAGE training, which is that peer access to group equity that helps support. And we've done that for over 10 years. Last Monday, we had our back-to-school new teacher orientation and we welcomed 147, 146 staff. And that means staff that might be changing levels also. So we had, if I jumped from elementary to middle school, or if I jumped from CTE into a different type of program, they were there also because those content area specialists were there. But we had 116 new staff to the district and 61 of those were brand-new, first-time teachers. And Becky, are we still hiring? Couple? Maybe. I put her on the spot.
Yep.
Right, right. So for the most part, we're getting there and she'll have a report on that later at the next board meeting too, but just on that district enrollment. But so staff, it was encouraging. They were there with the curriculum, with the coaches, and that they provided that background for those new staff, whether they're new to the Sioux Falls District or if they're changing curriculum areas. Some of our other back-to-school trainings focused with our admin, our interns and our instructional coaches, where we do that sheltered instruction observation protocol or that PSYOP training for our EL staff. And it's just good teaching. SPED 101 by that Special Education Department and instructional leadership and crucial conversations. Health and safety protocols, we talked about that. Building-specific and district-specific and also job-specific training that was needed depending on their job, custodians, clerical, EAs, teachers, depending on what group of students you work with, what dictated the training that you had with that. COVID procedures, PPE, and medical administration training and CPR. So our back-to-school trainings for our educational assistants this year looked differently. Usually they have a half a day where there's, we train our educational assistants differently or on a separate day. This year, it was embedded and they were with our classroom teachers. So that were, they were side by side and they're able to have that information. So that way, if we hop out, those educational assistants will be able to help support those teachers. And that's that bottom bullet there, how to work effectively with students in a virtual environment. And that was a big part of their training, that back-to-school. And they appreciated that. And we do gather feedback after all of our trainings, whether it's with our educational assistants, with our teachers, just to make sure that they can share information with us so we can tailor our trainings in the future to meet their needs. Clerical, they had part of their training virtually through Schoology and then they had another piece of their training in-person with Molly Satter and with Ally Warkus. And Ally Warkus helps us with that new coding that they'll have to do for the Department of Health code in Impenin Campus. And so they had two different types of training. Our back-to-school trainings for early childhood included the CSOW training, that's our LMS for elementary, and then that classroom assessment scoring system, which they use at that early childhood to document the progress of students. Elementary staff had CSOW and Bridges Math Intervention, middle school Schoology, flipped classroom, and video conferencing. High school Google tools, Screencastify, Performance Matters, that's our new assessment platform, and semester grading. And all of these things, our special education, they sat side by side with us. The EAs, the teachers support what we do every day in the classroom, but if we would have to pivot and go into remote learning, all of these things will help support that in case that would be needed. Back-to-school continued with special education and special education. They had some additional training. They had a two-hour virtual training that focused on the Return to Learn IEP process and procedures because they have extra steps that they need to do from that remote learning in fourth quarter. Teachers also had the opportunity to participate in independent training that focused on special educations and attended the Sioux Falls District Virtual Academy. So to help support those students that will be in our virtual academy. And the IEP facilitators had a half-day training focused on compliance and procedural updates. Nurses and psychologists and speech therapists, all again, what they need to do their job here, but also if we would jump into remote learning. And here's a picture of our 61 brand-new teachers at Lincoln High School last Monday. So that was really fun to see them all out there and ready to go. That was right when we finished in the auditorium and then they were going to go into their breakout sessions. That professional development is an area of emphasis identified through the Sioux Falls District's strategic plan. The weeks leading up to the beginning of the year were filled with district-led in services for all employee groups with job-specific training. In addition to the district planned professional development, building principals provided specific training with health and safety protocols for their particular building. Now, with that, I would ask that you acknowledge the professional development update for 2021.
Any questions? I've talked to a couple elementary teachers who are super excited about CSOW and what it has to offer. And so I'm excited that they're excited about that. And I just kind of saw it at a glimpse and it looked like it was a very user-friendly, very interactive for the student and the parent. And I think that's very important for that age group. And so I love that there's something for each level because I think as parents, we were challenged as well for a fourth quarter of how to stay in touch with what we're supposed to be knowing what's going on. And so it's just great to have a platform that we can access, that students can access, and we're all on the same page. So.
That was a big part. You know, we know on March 13th, when we That, that was a big part. You know, we know on March 13th, when we left, um, we had never done remote learning before, but we had time to prepare and really worked within teachers, listened to teachers, listened to parents through, um, interviews and open forums to collect that information, changed what we did, and that really tailored that back-to-school training and training that happened throughout the summer, um, to help support those teachers so that way they're ready if that would happen. So.
Hopefully preparation will keep that away. The goal, right? So, all right. Can I get, get a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Boyson.
Last thing on the list is, um, under my report is capital improvement plan. Mr. Kreider. We've got buildings still being built.
It's been an interesting summer, let's put it that way. Okay, this is the Capitol Outlay Report for August. Uh, we're going to review the status of the second-year projects. Uh, that's Laura Wilder, Horseman, Robert Frost. Uh, we're going to also, um, there's really three phases to this report. Uh, the second one is change order approval for Jefferson. If you remember, we're going to bring to you any owner asked for change orders through the process. And then we're going to do a little flyover of Ben Rifle and, uh, Jefferson High School to kind of show you the, the progress that's been happening on that project. So we're going to start with, uh, Laura Wilder, um, the bond portion. Um, the new playground entrance and elevator and stairs is ongoing. Tutor rooms, IEP facilitator and counselor's office, that's in that addition, is ongoing. Second-level staff restroom is ongoing as well. Capitol Outlay, uh, the eight restroom renovations are complete. Uh, galvanized piping replacement is complete, and corridor floor tile and, and painting the corridors are complete. Now, what does that mean? Um, so the status is, um, basically all the work in the existing facility is, is done. A new addition will be completed in about two weeks. Um, the elevator, like I reported, uh, is delayed because of the plant closure, and that's scheduled to be here in October. We plan on walling off that area and then scheduling either a time off or during Christmas or whatever makes sense for the school. So, um, that, we know that's going to be late. Uh, we just have to do a schedule when that happens. Um, the staff that is going to be in those, the addition, housing those additions have, they'll be operating out of where they worked last year. So, um, with the reduced number of students, we have places for them. And, uh, the playground will be all swept and fenced, and any area that they have equipment will be fenced off. So we're in pretty good shape at that point. So we have occupancy, uh, we're ready to go in, in the existing facility. Horseman, um, once again, the security entrance and administration area is ongoing. Renovation of the existing administration area is complete, and.
Where, and Laura Wilder is up here, but you're at Horseman.
I gotta remember to keep going.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I kind of forget about the PowerPoint.
I can't keep all your stuff.
Additional parking lot, um, that is in place. They're doing some landscaping and, and fencing area right this week, and that is ongoing. Uh, existing restrooms in the existing facility are complete. Uh, re-roof existing area is complete. Reconstruction of vestibule stairs is complete. Update fire alarm, intercom clock system is complete. Replacing existing galvanized piping is complete. Uh, replacing corridor tile and various areas complete. Uh, the, the chiller is complete. They started it up today, so it's working. So they finally got air conditioning.
It's a good day to start that.
Yeah, they, I'm sure they appreciated that. We had some temporary ones in the office area for them, so, um, they weren't totally in the, in the heat there, but the staff was, uh, putting up with a couple of things the last couple of days. So, status, uh, all work in existing facility is complete. New addition should be complete in approximately three weeks. And that's going to give us a little time. I think they're going to try to get done a little quicker, but we have furniture sitting there waiting to go in, and they'll get us the security and, uh, the, those portions complete before we move in. So we're not doing what we're doing over at Robert Frost where we moved in and, and finishing up the little pieces to that. Um, they're currently, they're going to house out of the existing office area until, uh, addition is complete. And the parking lot will be ready to go, uh, with the exception of the landscaping, which we're gonna, um, you'll see that at Robert Frost as well. We're going to wait until we get a little, maybe a little rain and, and it cools off a little bit. Um, so that's where we're at today there. Robert Frost, um, security entrance and administration area on the east side of the building, I put ongoing, um, but we've moved in there, so they're, they're working out of the new, new addition. Expand the existing gymnasium is ongoing, and the two kindergarten restrooms to meet ADA is complete. Um, the, the drop-off area is complete. ADA ramps on the corners are complete. The new chiller is complete. Intercom clock system is complete, and the new corridor tile, uh, throughout the building is complete. So, status of the work, um, all the existing inside is complete. New gymnasium will be completed in approximately two weeks. We'll have the entrance, the food service, that'll all be done, ready to go adjacent to that. There's going to be a temporary wall that blocks off that, uh, gymnasium. Um, and that should be done, painted out, and be done in two weeks. Um, so we're currently using the office. Um, tomorrow they're going to get their security card readers and the intercom pieces, um, put in, so we'll be ready to go for the start of the school year. So moving on to owner change order number two for Jefferson High School. As you, as you know, um, the original owner contingency was $5,133,343. Um, we had a, a change order one that brought that down to $4,946,639. And we're bringing two items today, and I think you'll like the end results of this is, the first one is extend concrete sidewalks. This will extend the concrete sidewalks from, um, Career Avenue to Ma, or Madison, and it'll also do a diagonal sidewalk through, through the campus to the entrance of Career, Career Technical Academy. So we'll link that together. That's, uh, $55,976. I'll show you when we do the flyover. I, I think there's a spot where you, you'll be able to see that. And, um, the second item is the emergency responder. There's an allowance in the project, and we had a $300,000 allowance. And once we did the evaluation and did the analysis of the, the building, uh, we were able to put that in for $129,452. So that's really good news, so that it wasn't as bad as we were anticipating. And, uh, and I was able to tell the, or talk to the contractor about putting that on the owner's side. So we took the remaining, um, $170,000, put it on the owner contingency, not on the construction side of the contingency. So with that, the, with the two items, it puts a credit of $114,000 back in the, uh, owner contingency, which will bring that contingency up to $5,61,210. So we'll be asking you for that approval at the end. And then what we will do is, um, we'll show the video of Ben Rifle and Jefferson, and, uh, at the end we'll acknowledge the report and, uh, I'm going to pull off this one and, uh, ask for the, um, owner's change order. Let me if I can get this all working right. So we'll get started on, uh. Okay, this is Ben Rifle Middle School. As you can see, uh, progress is, uh, this is about a week and a half old. We've got the asphalt in on Faith Avenue, which is on the right. Uh, parking lot, um, they're still using as staging area, but they plan on putting the first lift on that this fall and getting the curb and gutter started here shortly. Um, they're starting to move around with a brick, as you can see that black section. And you see, this is the backside, the north side. That's A3, the single level, then A1 is on the left, and that's all roofed. They're, they should be finishing up this week with the roof on A2, that's on the right side of the library dome or arch. Uh, music area is roofed, and that's what you're seeing right there. Uh, what you see at the bar joists, then, uh, the opening there, that's the auditorium. They're putting up the proscenium opening and finishing up on the north side. And you can see the, the gymnasium edges sit there. And, uh, they'll start putting the bar joists on the gym, and you can start seeing the round circle of, they're digging the foundations right now. In this picture, they've got that foundation put in already. And, uh, so the, the common area in the middle will start getting enclosed. Uh, the good thing is, the contractor says he's on schedule, and still everything's looking good. A majority of everything is, um, the HVAC systems are on site or in town in a warehouse, and, uh, things are progressing fairly, fairly well there. Uh, we probably, we're going to finish out that, uh, entrance on 41st Street so the church has access before winter sets in to their, to the new driveways. That was a partnership, you can see, uh, with the church, and when we built that, then they have some reimbursements for us. You can see the football field and track right here, um, being done. Uh, our goal is to have that irrigation in for the football field and seeded this fall yet. So, and that little half-moon on the one side is the, where the high jump pads, and that'll be asphalt. I'm going to move this forward once they come over the top. So the, the brick is actually started on A1. It's well past that entrance now, or that library, um, because that's going to be all curtain wall and with some columns in the middle. So it's amazing, you can really see when you, when you get a video like this, how much they, they actually, uh, progress they make in a week. Jump forward to the, Thomas Jefferson. This is the high school. Um, it's about the double the size of the middle school. So the site is, they have to be a little further along. They have to be, um, there's a lot more finishes inside. The, Ben Rifle is more masonry, so when they're done, we can start painting. This is, there's more sheet rock in this one, more finishes. It takes a little longer time. But if you look at the outside, they're in a pretty good position. They've got pretty much everything roofed now, and it's the intention to be dried in, uh, with it, you know, by the end of the month. So it's, it's really coming along. They're gonna, their goal is to have one house done. So I'm hoping by the time we have a tour, they're going to have one of the houses almost complete. So we, so you can see one, one of those houses. There's a lot of duplications. It's five houses that are fairly similar. Um, the longer one is the new tech house, or learning, learning suite, I could call them. They're not really houses, they're learning suites. And that's the longer one that you see here. Um, then interior section will be the, the courtyard, that, that interior courtyard. And you just coming past the, the music, music wing. Then you have the tech ed, that's the farthest one to the bottom. Then, as you can see, the, the auditorium where the fly loft is and the smoke, smoke gaskets are on the top. Then you see the boiler room, food service on the far right. Common area is in that middle, that middle triangular piece. It's not rectangular. And then you come around and see the gymnasiums.
Looking forward to the tour. Yeah.
What's that?
Looking forward to the tour.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think you'll be pleasantly supply, surprised how it looks and how it's coming. Bounce out. You can see how the, the football field, they've got the, the asphalt in, they've got the base of the football field in. They got the tennis courts poured, they, um, not putting the surface down, but they have the fences. They have the practice fields. That's all irrigated. They plan on seeding that. So we get a two years of growth, you know, a good year plus growth on it. Get some grass established this year. Um, they're really trying to push to get all the, all the side seed around the building. I don't know if they'll be able to get there, but, uh, they're really pushing to be there for the, for this fall. Um, metal panels will be starting. There's green metal panels where some of that, right at the entrance area is. I'm going to stop it as we, when we start spinning around to even see that. I'll show you the CTE. And you, you should be able to see, um, when we get around the other side. You see the dirt on the top? That's where we, our excess dirt went. We filled in a valley on the southeast tech side, so we're able to save some money. So we didn't have to haul it off, and we were able to distribute it there. So it's a benefit to Southeast Tech and, and us as well. Okay, so the sidewalk that you see is going to come from this corner, what we're approving tonight, and we're going to take a sidewalk all along the street down to Madison here. So it'll link into the city sidewalks. And we're also going to run a sidewalk down that would align into this parking lot and would cut across right to the main entrance. So it'll kind of go in a diagonal. How people would walk. We're trying to anticipate where they're going to walk. Sometimes that, that's hard to do, but that's where that sidewalk's going to be. And as you, as you start seeing on the right side or the top of your screen as we turn Marion Road Construction, city's had a great year. Um, they're finishing paving now, so I, that will be open this fall, and it's linking to that neighborhood to the, to the west. And, uh, so it's really coming together real nice. I didn't want to ta, I didn't want to take you inside tonight, so anticipation of your tour.
Sure. No, that's fine. Yeah, I think it's, it's crazy to think that that'll be open in just a year, and we'll have lots of busy bodies in there and, um, all sorts of fun activities and the excitement of that new school and, along with a new school year and a new building. And yeah, we, I'm excited to get out there and see it. So.
So, uh, we're, we have the principal on board and, uh, and athletic director, and they've been instrumental in helping us pick some colors in the gym and so forth. So it's good to have them on board. So that can be part of the task. So with that, um, just looking for acknowledgement of the August report and approval of change order number, owner change order number two for the project. So.
I get a motion?
And answer any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to bring up that just given the growing enrollment for our district, that really the significance, um, that our contractors were our essential workers, and that really day in and day out, they kept showing up. So every nail, every joist, every electrical outlet was touched by a construction worker, and it really took a lot of tenacity, persistence, courage on their part, given the scope of, of this year. Um, and then just with that, what that means for our district, our families and our students to have a new school opening, and it was all done. It seems like, um, we're progressing nicely and that the schedule is somewhat on time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, there's been some challenges. I mean, we've really worked through some things during these, the smaller renovations sometimes. I mean, we had air handlers showing up. They were supposed to be here in June. That plants went on strike, or there was shutdowns, and they, they came about the first of August. So they, people have been really working hard to get certain things done. So, you know, and sometimes you get a, uh, people that have to start reducing their numbers because of, uh, COVID contacts. So everybody's really been working hard to try because of COVID contacts, so everybody's really been working hard to try to get to us where we're at. And just hats off to everybody, and it, it's the building staff, too, that, you know, they, they're seeing that, they're working with us and how to get that through. So it's, there's, it's togetherness, I guess, right?
Great teamwork, yeah.
All right, well, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of acknowledging the first, or the report tonight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kate.
Yes, policy. We have the first reading of the Sioux Falls School District Policy, IHBH, General Education Homebound Services. This policy was reviewed by our Policy Review Committee. Suggested revisions, update language to include virtual services instruction. Obviously, we realized with all the work that we put into remote learning last spring could be also served for those students that do have a, an illness or, or something that keeps them out of school but are still able to learn. So we realize that, that we can still offer some virtual services to them. We do say that if, if the condition of the student could possibly endanger the health or safety of teaching staff, that it would be in service, services, in-person services would be not available, but virtual would be. So anyway, we've just updated the language for that. And again, this is the first reading, so it will be, it will require a second reading, and it'll be posted for public review on our school district website and returned to the board on September 28th. So I move to approve the first reading of IHBF, General Education Homebound Services.
All right. Any discussion, questions? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes for first read. Anything else to come before the board? All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion adjourn, motion, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Good job, Carly.